I'd like to call to order the Lake Mills City Council for May 15, 2018. Would you all rise for the flag pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice and of moral conduct.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Knippel?
Here.
Okay. Correction and/or approval of the regular city council and work session minutes of May 1, 2018. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
For both is that? Mr. Fritsch? Is that for both of them?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion or changes? Seeing none, call the roll. Mrs. Fritsch? Aye. Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Okay. Takes us to number four, correspondence. Open it to anybody on the council. Anybody have correspondence they'd like to share?
I did receive some emails on the Prairie Gardens yet going back and forth asking questions about being in the city limits.
Okay.
Under correspondence, who we cover like the meetings where you attended a school board meeting and the presentation?
I guess you can.
That. So I attended that for the presentation on the high school and the additions. And then also there was a meeting I attended between the city and Lake Mills EMS Aurora Summit and some of the fire department was there also.
Okay. And that will have some relevance on our meeting after the meeting tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
I had a, oh, sorry.
Go ahead. No, that's fine.
I had an email from Chuck Krieger, our auditor. I didn't know that this was a routine thing, that every year he contacts one council member and asks a few questions. All the years I worked here, I never knew that happened, but I was picked this time, so that was what I took care of.
So you had to answer the questions?
Yeah, just a few questions.
I'm really glad they asked you, because I probably wouldn't know the answers.
Just ask Steve.
Yeah, right. But this way she could answer.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Anything else on correspondence? I did have some correspondence, but I've been working with our city attorney and he's working on the answers to the questions, so I won't bring that up at this time. Okay. Questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you are asked to hold your comments until the public hearing. Public comment may be, may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided on the podium. If there's someone who would like to address the council, would you please go up to the podium?
If we had input on a public hearing item, do we wait for that time, or do we?
If it's on the public hearing that is scheduled, I would recommend waiting till then, unless you can't stay for that.
Nope. Good. Thank you.
Okay. So seeing no one else for public comment, we'll move on to city manager's report number six.
I wanted to announce that we received the proclamation from the Municipal Clerks Appreciation Week, so we wanted to appreciate our municipal clerks, Heather and Misty. Provided the first quarter general fund budget and the capital budget, the general fund check register and the police department report. Are there any questions? Otherwise, I have nothing else to report at this time.
Okay. Acceptance of minutes of the public works board, April 10, 2018. They will be placed on file. Item number eight, council business, board and committee appointments. I would like to appoint Karen Geschko to the ethics board. We have an opening on that board and Karen agreed to be willing to serve. She meets the criteria that is required for that board and I think she'd do a fine job if there... We need a motion for that, right? No? For the ethics board?
No, I think they have to confirm.
Okay, so we're fine? Okay, so Karen, thank you for serving and being on our committee.
No, you need a motion to confirm.
Oh, then I was right.
Yeah.
Okay, I need a motion.
I make a motion to confirm Karen Geschko to the ethics board.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll. Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Okay. So Karen will be serving in that capacity for us and hopefully won't have to ever serve since it's ethics committee and maybe we won't have any ethics concerns, so. Okay, public hearing, sidewalk cafe license new and renewal. Open the public hearing at this time. And now, if you have something you wanted to speak to?
Patrick Doyle, 325 East Washington Street, Lake Mills. We are, filled out the application for the sidewalk cafe downtown. It's something I know our customers are, would look forward to down there and it's just our way of adding to the ambiance of, of the downtown and making things just a little bit better in any way we can. I don't know whether it's possible to make any type of adjustment on the fee considering we are a, the permit goes from July 1 through June 30, and at this point, we're looking at two, two fees of $100, one of them for a month and a half. So I don't know whether that's possible or not, but we thought we would bring that up. Thank you.
Does anybody have an answer to that question on staff? Is that just normal, the way it goes, or?
That, we have taken them before and they've paid the fee and we haven't adjusted it, but it's always possible to adjust it as far as I understand. It's council action.
The code doesn't talk about prorating. I know part of the fee is just, I just want to point out, is to help pay for, because there's a publication with the public hearing. I don't know what the breakdown of that is. I apologize, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but like Steve said, there's, you have the authority to do that.
Typically, we have it because it costs us just about exactly what we do to, do the advertising.
Are we doing the public hearing for both the new and the renewal tonight for this applicant?
It was listed out on the public hearing as the new, the renewal, and then there's also another sidewalk cafe as well. We group them together.
So it's not going to cost us double to do his license?
No, and like I said, I don't know the exact cost of what that publication fee is. The fee is to cover that as well as other administrative costs.
I make a motion that the city waive...
Can we do that in public hearing, or do we have to wait?
Oh, yeah, we have to wait.
Well, we'll do it under the miscellaneous licenses, but I'd appreciate that motion at that time. Thank you. So, any other discussion in the public hearing? Questions for Mr. Doyle?
My understanding it was just two tables, is all you're looking at?
So seeing nothing else, we'll close the public hearing and move on to item 8C, miscellaneous licenses, the first one of which is the sidewalk cafe, the new one for Doyle's Dogs. And that would be the one that we... See, is the other one on here separately?
The other one's within the sidewalk cafe consent agenda.
So we would just leave that one alone then and just talk about this one?
Correct.
Okay, so now would be the time for us to discuss what you wanted to discuss, Vicki.
I make a motion that the council waive one of the license fees for Doyle's Dogs for the sidewalk cafe.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any other discussion on that item?
Well, that's just on the waiving of it. We have to actually talk about the actual license.
Right, but don't we have to do that first, what you just said first?
Yeah.
And then talk about the license itself? Okay, so we're doing like an amendment, sort of, on it, okay. Any other discussion on the amendment for the waiving of the fee? Would you call the roll, please? Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Okay. So now we're on the regular license itself as amended, which means only one fee rather than two. And so, now we're on, discuss sidewalk cafe, the license. Anyone have a motion for this item?
I move we grant the sidewalk cafe license to Doyle's Dogs for the remainder of this license year and also for next year. You know, the upcoming year, starting July 1st.
That one is within the consent order.
Okay.
The renewal is, just the new one is before us.
Okay, from now until June 30th then.
Okay, great. And I need a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Now, do we have any discussion on the actual issuance of the license?
I have a question. Once the tables and chairs are set up out on the sidewalk, I didn't see, maybe it was submitted and it just wasn't attached, but I didn't see a drawing or a diagram. Is there a full 60 inches clearance on the sidewalk away from the tables and chairs?
Okay.
It says nine and a half feet.
Oh, okay. I guess I just didn't scroll far enough down.
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, I recall that West Lake Street, your side of the street is more sidewalk than the other one.
Are you planning on leaving those out?
No.
Okay.
They have to come in every night.
Okay.
You probably want to bring them in anyway, because they might disappear.
Yeah, they might not be there the next day. Although that wouldn't be real common, it could happen. Okay. Any other questions or considerations on this? All right. Seeing none, call the roll, please. Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Okay. Moving on to item C2, tavern operator's license for Hillary Sprecher. And let me get my computer up to snuff here. There we go. All right. Is there a motion to approve the tavern operator's license for Hillary Sprecher?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And no discussion, call the roll. Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Okay. Moving on to item 3, the liquor license renewal and successor agent of Walgreens and Company. The reason this has been pulled out is because it has different people on the paperwork than last year, so we thought it'd be best to do it that way. So, does anyone make a motion for granting the renewal for the Walgreens liquor license?
I move we grant the renewal of the liquor license for Walgreens and the license for the successor agent, also at Walgreens.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And no discussion, call the roll.
We charge him 16 grand for it.
Yeah, I think that's correct. Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Okay, moving on to item 8C4, weights and measures, a new, the new request for countryside jewelry. Anybody want to make a motion for that?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay. So basically, that's because of the move, correct?
It's, they, they have not had a weights and measures license in the past and in reviewing their business and in discussion, it was determined that they should, so they did, they agreed and submitted the application. So this is a brand-new license for them.
Really? I would have thought, I thought we had done that in the past. Okay, my mistake. Do we, let's see. Did we just have a motion and a second?
Yes.
I thought so. Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, call the roll. Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Okay. That moves us to item D, the consent agenda, which includes the liquor license renewals, the weight and measures license renewals, the cigarette license renewals, the mobile home park license renewals, the sidewalk cafe license renewals, and the well operators license renewals. If any council member would like to have any specific license pulled out at this time for separate consideration, you can do that at this time. Is there anyone who has something they'd like to pull out of the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda renewals.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there anything that, anybody, we don't normally discuss things, but I suppose we could, if there was something. Seeing none, call the roll, please. Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Okay. Moving on to item 8E, discussion and decision on the bid award contract LM 118, milling and asphalt, concrete paving and patching. Okay, who's taking this one?
I'll start.
Ahah. It's all yours.
So, this is contract LM 118. This is our annual asphalt patching contract. We included in this contract is our, our normal rehabilitation, includes summer patching of patches, including the lead service patches that you've been seeing all over the city. It includes a fall patching program that we do. It follows, this year, we have a lower amount of chip seal streets, and the chip seal is not in this contract, but that means that we're, we're planning to do more pulverization and more melon overlay streets this year. And this is the contract for all of that type of work. It also includes some pavement at the parking lot at the library as that parking, that possible new parking lot is constructed. This would provide the asphalt for that. The, the bids that came in on May 7 were very competitive. There were two bidders, Pain and Dolan and Wolf Paving. They were actually within $1,400 on a $753,000 contract, so they were very competitive. Both of these bidders are contractors that we've worked with in the past. The low bidder or the, the low bidder is Pain and Dolan, and they were the contract award last year. So these are, it's a contract we've worked with before. In comparison, not only was there a very competitive price between the two bidders, we also compared it to the average price that we paid last year for the low bidding. And in your document, you'll see that there was actually a reduction in cost from last year's prices.
Now, if we could just get that to happen for Highway 89, we would be in really good shape, right?
Correct. Any other questions regarding that contract?
Madam Chairman, I move approval of contract 1-18.
Do you want the council motion?
Yes.
18-5-2-1. Is that what we want? Or do we want what he?
Yeah, and if you'd like, I can read the title of it for the formality that's required first, that we've got.
Why don't you read the title first and then we'll let Doug take the?
City Council Motion 18-5-2-1, authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement for the milling and asphalted concrete paving and patching contract LM 1-18.
That's where you came up with that. Now, that's what you would like to move?
That is correct.
Okay, Mr. Fritsch made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions for anybody on staff about this or at this time? Seeing none, let's...
Yeah, I got one question.
Okay, there you go.
With, I assume with oil prices creeping up, will this, this will not have any effect on the contract, right?
The contract prices that have been bid will be in placed into the contract and these will be good for the life of the contract. Well, I believe it's the first week in November is the completion of this project. So contract will be open until that time.
So it's good we were jolly on the spot with this, before they found out that it was all going up, right?
It was very competitive.
Those guys generally know.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll? Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Okay, thank you. Item 8F, discussion and decision on bid award contract LM 318, concrete curb and gutter and sidewalk maintenance. And Misty, would you read that one, please?
City Council Motion 18-5-2-2, authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement for concrete curb and gutter and sidewalk maintenance contract 3-18.
Okay. I think you're on again.
Very similar. This concrete work is bid as a contract to supplement the, the asphalt contract. This is sidewalk rehabilitation, trip hazards throughout the year, that continuing program, and then as well as curb and gutter that's required as far as the maintenance program that, that was just awarded to Pain and Dolan. This contract, the bid again was on Monday, May 7. There was only one bidder. However, we did do some analysis with regard to the bid that was, that was received from Schweiger Concrete. Again, this company did have this contract two years ago, so we have worked with them in the past. They are fairly local and, fairly local, they are local. 2000, we did a comparison of the 2017 bid prices and we looked at the three lowest bidders from last year. We averaged those three lowest bidders and again compared them to the prices from this year. That, you'll see in your packet, was 154,000 with that, with those 2017 prices averaged, and the bid came in at 149,000. So again, prices that are very in line with last year's bidders. So even though there was one bidder, the numbers were very, very much in line with what we've seen.
All right, good to hear. We probably should have a motion on the floor for this.
Should we read the title?
What?
Should we read the title?
Oh, didn't you already?
Yes, title's read.
Okay.
Okay, so we need a motion and a second.
I move approval of contract 3-18, concrete curb and gutter and sidewalk maintenance.
And that is also motion 18-5-2-2, all at the same time, two numbers, same thing.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Well, I, just a question, just for my clarification and understanding of how this works. Are they bidding on work that we already know about, or are they bidding on work we know about and any potential work that may come up during the year?
Both.
Okay.
So the way we set both of these contracts up is based on what was in the budget in the planning with the public works department. And then, for example, as, as the winter progressed and the freeze thaw cycles have changed, some of our analysis from last fall, we are again proceeding with reviewing the streets that are proposed for chip seal, or for pulverization or for melon overlay or the patches, and also evaluating some of the curb and gutter in those areas. While we have estimates that we created this bid based on the actual marking that will occur, that will occur throughout the year. So those numbers could, in, in some of the patching areas, could change plus or minus based on what we find in the field throughout the year. And again, as patches, as you know, the lead service program, as landowners choose to replace their service and the water utility must, must replace their side if it is led as well, the unknown of where those patches are can happen throughout the year. But these two contracts allow us to then patch those places throughout the year.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to know.
Okay.
Makes perfect sense.
Good. Good to hear that you had foresight to do that. Good job. Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, and unless I have any other questions or comments, call the roll. Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Moving on to item 8G, discussion, discussion and decision on the Walgreens Company versus the City of Lake Mills proposed settlement agreement. Do you read, you have?
Yep, yes. City, city council motion 18-5-2-3, authorizing the city manager to execute the settlement agreement between Walgreens Co. and the City of Lake Mills concerning property tax assessments for 2016 and 2017, Jefferson County case number 16CV262.
Mrs. Fritsch, I request that the entire motion be read.
Okay. Would you continue, please?
Be it moved by the city council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section 1, that the settlement agreement by and between Walgreens Co. and the City of Lake Mills, copies of which are attached hereto and made a part hereof, are hereby approved. Section 2, that the city manager is authorized to execute said agreement and it takes such actions as necessary to implement such agreement. The city council does hereby approve the settlement agreement, stipulation in order for dismissal, and authorizes the council president to sign the motion.
We need a motion.
I move we adopt the motion that was just read.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Do we want the council to speak anything, or do we want to just continue on our way here? We're not married.
Yeah, I don't think it could hurt.
Maybe the city attorney could reiterate what this is about.
Sure.
Sir.
We have a longstanding real estate assessment issue with Walgreens. This is commonly referred to as the dark store case in Lake Mills. They have sued us.
Can you put the mic closer?
Oh, sure. They have sued the City of Lake Mills claiming an excessive tax assessment for the taxable years two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen. Those are under dispute right now. Two thousand eighteen has been challenged at the, the notice has been sent out that they intend to challenge their assessment for that taxable year. However, the board of review has not occurred yet and there isn't formal litigation on that claim right now. This settlement agreement, as has been presented and discussed, authorizes the city to settle the claim at the amounts that were dictated in the short memo that I sent over. It also accounts for the prospective challenge of the two thousand eighteen tax year. Walgreens has agreed not to, let me read this very precisely. Walgreens has agreed that the parties will not sign the settlement agreement and that it will not become effective until after the board of review date, which is coming regarding the two thousand eighteen tax year. And Walgreens has not technically filed an objection to that at this point, just notice of their intent to do so. Do you have specific questions regarding this case?
Did they, well, I guess this goes back to the one before. Did they sue us in two thousand fifteen also?
Yes, we've been sued basically every year since the settlement.
Yeah, so their, their stipulation is that the assessor who's following the state rules didn't assess them according to the rules that they believe they should be assessed.
There's probably some room for argument in the method and manner in which a, an appraiser assesses property.
Sure.
There's, reasonable minds will differ on the exact manner that they come up. You pull different comps, you can produce the result that you intend to produce with an appraisal.
That's right, Steve.
But Mike's statement is absolutely correct. We followed the state standards, which is put up in a state manual on how assessors are supposed to assess. And the courts have decided to follow Walgreens' decision and so every time, and then they switched. So what we got from the first settlement and then we adjusted to that, they've now changed again and decided to file under a new process. So every time they don't like your assessment, they just change what the rules are and move on.
Exactly.
So you'll notice that the League of Wisconsin Municipalities sent out a document requesting a referendum in every city in the state, city and village in the state, asking the public to make a decision on the dark stores and Walgreens issues.
Yeah, and so, long story short, because this has been happening year after year after year, the amount of tax, property tax that is refunded back to Walgreens directly affects the property tax of all the taxpayers in our community and makes their taxes go up and we're par, we're, as a homeowner, we're par, paying their portion of the property taxes to keep our city up and running.
That's absolutely correct. That's exactly the way I would say it.
Isn't this the third time we've been sued and each time it's been at least multiple years?
Every time it's been three years.
So nine years of this has been going on?
Yep. We barely, we barely.
And it probably will happen again.
We barely had waived the requirements. The, the first time they sued us was, was within months of us dropping the requirement in the developer's agreement that the developer had to pay any taxes that weren't, didn't meet the requirements. So if they had sued us before we had waived that agreement, then JJB would have had to pay the fees. But because we had just waived those, because we didn't see this dark store issue coming, they sued us just after that and then we had to pay all of it, even though we had an agreement that said those taxes would be used to pay the debt on the tip. So what Mike said is true, we picked up all their taxes.
Yeah, it just gets shifted to everybody else.
It gets shifted to everybody else and.
My recollection when, I think it was the first time that the city was sued, that there were thirty other cities in the state that were being sued by the same parties on the same theory.
It's, it's up to about ninety now.
Wow.
And, and, but it's not just Walgreens anymore, it's Menards, Target, several of the other big stores.
And so folks that are listening out there, if, if you don't agree with what's happening, by all means, call your, your congressmen and senators and let them know your thoughts on the dark stores matter. I know we, we all have, so.
And there is legislation that's in front of both the House and the Senate that was presented during the two thousand seventeen year. They had a chance to pass that and they kind of kicked the can down the road despite bipartisan support and despite, like Steve mentioned, the vast majority of municipalities, probably all of the municipalities in this, in the state, being on board and supporting that legislation.
Yeah, it'll just get worse.
They had a majority vote, they could have passed it if they wanted to. The leadership kicked it back and unless, when you say senate and legislature, let's make sure that we know it's a state issue.
State issue, yes.
Your state senator, your state legislator.
Good point.
So those are the people that we need to be pressuring to make sure that, that we get fair assessments here.
I've got one question for two thousand eighteen assessment. If it comes in over to, over the agreed upon assessment or if the assessment for two thousand eighteen is over the proposed settlement agreement, then they can go back and sue us again.
Right. We're essentially stipulating to the valuation that's going to be assessed for the two thousand eighteen tax year. It's in agreement. Correct. It's part of the agreement.
But two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty?
They are fair game, this agreement doesn't touch that and we're not allowed to prospectively enter a stipulation on those assessments. We can't. If the, if the legislation doesn't change, you can guarantee we'll see it again. That's very likely.
Yeah, and they have, they have case law really on their side right now, unless I'm wrong.
They absolutely do. It's, it's poor case law, but it, yep, it's case law. I would, I would venture to say that judges don't fully understand assessment and taxation.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to go on the record and state that I would not be willing to say that. I think that our, when, when we were at the mediation the last time, I think that, that attorney expressed that opinion. Oh, it's probably a county we held opinion.
But probably it's okay in Jefferson County.
That sucks. Any other questions?
No, we do have a motion and a second. So we are doing it right tonight, yes, good for us. Okay, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, call the question.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. Item eight H, ordinance nine, L one one nine two, amending the two thousand eighteen capital budget containing ordinance one one eight one, first reading. Do you want to read that?
Um, yes, just a second.
When you get it, Jack. I'm not there yet either, so don't panic. Okay, I gotta go grab two.
Ordinance eleven ninety, did you want me to start?
Do what you were doing.
Ordinance eleven ninety-two and ordinance amending the two thousand eighteen capital budget contained in ordinance eleven eighty-one, whereas the City of Lake Mills has heretofore prepared the two thousand eighteen capital budget in accordance with state budget laws and city policy. And whereas the city council, City of Lake Mills, has passed ordinance number eleven eighty-one adopting the annual capital budget of the City of Lake Mills for the fiscal year commencing January one, two thousand eighteen. And whereas said ordinance was filed in accordance with the applicable state statutes, and whereas the city council desires to amend the budget contained in ordinance number eleven eighty-one. And whereas funds are available to amend the budget for the fiscal year commencing January one, two thousand eighteen from, from the debt service. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council, the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, that section one, that the City of Lake Mills' capital budget be amended as follows. There's a listing of all the numbers, the, the debt at the bottom, two thousand eighteen budgeted, two million, two hundred forty-seven thousand, seven hundred, amended budget amount, two million, two hundred thirty-three thousand. Section two, that the supplemental appropriation will increase the two thousand eighteen budget for the capital budget. Section three, that all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section four, the city clerk is hereby ordered and directed to cause this ordinance to be properly filed. Section five, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval and publication in the manner provided by law. Thank you.
Just a reminder to the public that all of these ordinances and resolutions are on the website, the city website, so you can go there and hit the little attachment and you can see exactly what we have in front of us as well. So if you want more of a breakdown on the money piece of this, it's all right there for, for you. And if that's a problem for some reason, contact city office and we'll help you figure out how to do that. So, okay, this is the first reading.
I make a motion that we waive the second reading and go directly to the third.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second to suspend the second reading and to go to the third.
Can I ask a question? Section two says the supplemental appro, appropriation will increase, it's actually decrease.
Decrease.
If, I don't know if you want to make that amendment or correction.
Can we make an editorial?
Right now, the motion is to suspend the rules and skip to the third.
Well, first we have to.
You can still amend the.
We have to do.
There hasn't been a first reading yet, so you can still amend after this.
Can an editorial, can the maker of the motion accept an editorial correction? Editorial change.
Probably not, because of the.
We'll, we'll need a formal amendment of the motion.
Because of the significance of the change. Only if it was a typo, that we could maybe do, but this makes a big difference, the meaning of the thing.
For clarification, Vicky, you made the motion.
To suspend the rule.
To suspend. I did not hear who had made the second. Thank you.
Who made the second?
Doug did.
Doug. Doug did.
Doug.
Okay, Doug did. And so we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, which we can do without making the change yet. Okay, let's call the roll on that.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, with that moves us to the third reading. You want to read the title again?
Just, can you, please have that, thank you.
You want me to read the title or?
Nope. Ordinance eleven ninety-two and ordinance amending the two thousand eighteen capital budget contained in ordinance eleven eighty-one.
I'm just laughing at my computer. Okay, so now we need to make an amendment to the wording on section two. Does someone want to amend it to say decrease, not increase?
I'll make a motion to amend section two to read that this supplemental appropriation will decrease the two thousand eighteen budget for the capital budget.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we now have an amendment. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's call the roll on the amendment.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, now we're on the third reading as amended. Is there any, well, first, we should get a motion. Do we have a motion to approve the third reading as amended?
I move the third reading as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, now, is there any discussion?
I want to tell them why we pushed it.
Yes, somebody want to explain why we did this? Thank you. We can have.
My understanding is this is, this is follow-up from our last meeting, so we've already made the adjustments and now we need to actually modify the budget and that's why we're moving so quick on this.
It's how.
Actually, the last meeting, we set up for the bonds. So we passed a resolution that allowed us to put together this bond report. And then this actually is the ordinance amendment that, that tells you exactly what the other one did in the form of the budget.
Right.
Okay, thank you and thank you. All right, let's call the roll.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, so now we have that completed and takes us to item eight I, resolution eighteen seventeen, providing for the sale of the general obligation promissory notes, which you will read the.
Resolution eighteen dash seventeen, resolution providing for the sale of approximately two million, three hundred five thousand dollars, general obligation promissory notes, series two thousand eighteen A.
So, now, does anybody request this be read in its entirety? Otherwise, are we okay with it? Is he hearing nothing? I guess we are. So, Misty, do you, no, Betsy, you take this one, right?
Yes.
Reluctantly, but yes, right?
Yes, it's, it's a lot, you know, it's, it's borrowing, it's important.
Yes, it is.
Yes. We have with us John Cameron from Ellers, who is our financial advisor, and he would like to go over the pre-sale report that is included in your packets. So, John, would you do that?
Thank you for coming tonight.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, everyone. John Cameron with Ellers. And what I'd like to walk through briefly is the pre-sale report that I passed out for the general promissory note series two thousand and eighteen A. So to hit the, the high notes, the promissory notes are for a number of different projects that are budgeted for in two thousand and eighteen, primarily roadwork from a dollar perspective, but a number of different items. The notes are being issued for a ten-year period on a general obligation basis, so using the full faith and credit and taxing powers of the city. Because it's up to ten years, it's notes, if it was beyond ten years in period of time, it would be considered to be bonds. So these would be general obligation promissory notes. After the issuance of the promissory notes, the total principal outstanding balance within the city for GO debt will be approximately nineteen point one million, which is seventy point three percent of your general obligation debt limit, and then approximately eight point one million in remaining borrowing capacity. Principal on the notes will be due May first, starting in the year two thousand and nineteen, out through two thousand and twenty-eight, and interest will be due every six months beginning May one of two thousand and nineteen. There will be a call feature on the notes allowing the city to either refinance or pay them in full, starting with the two thousand and twenty-six maturity, so a seven-year call, which is typical for a ten-year notes. These will be issued as bank qualified debt, really it's, when you're, anytime you're issuing less than ten million dollars in a calendar year, the debt that's being issued is considered to be bank qualified, which really expands the pool of potential. be bank-qualified, which really expands the pool of potential underwriters and banks that may potentially bid on it, yielding what we would feel to be the best possible interest rates for the debt. In terms of a rating, we will seek a rating as part of this. We actually just scheduled the rating call today for June 6. The city's most recent bonds were issued AA minus by Standard and Poor's. We'll be seeking a rating with Standard and Poor's again as part of this issue for both the notes and the revenue bonds. In terms of method of sale, for both of these, both the GO notes and the revenue bonds, we're recommending that they be sold on a competitive basis, really is the practice of the city to do so, and it's something that we believe heavily in when the situation warrants it. Again, it really expands the pool of potential underwriters, it allows us to take competitive bids, yielding what we would feel to be the best possible interest rate for the city for the debt issuance. Jumping ahead to the page five, from a calendar standpoint, in terms of the timing, we're here this evening, like I said, we're looking to do the rating call with S&amp;P on June 6, looking to get the official statement, which is the primary offering document for the debt issuance, published the week of June 11. The actual meeting night to award the sale of the bonds would be at your June 19 meeting, and then the estimated closing date in terms of when funds would be available would be July 11. Walking through the worksheets for this issuance on page six, what this shows is the city's existing base case analysis for general obligation debt. So to kind of walk from left to right, we have your total equalized value on the very left-hand side of the page, projected out at a 1% increase over time, which is rather conservative. You have your existing principal and interest payments, so this is your existing debt payments, not including the new debt. And then you have a number of different abatement sources, primarily the TIF districts, 2, 3, and 4, and then the contributions from the town, leaving you with a net levy for debt service. So the amount, your total debt service payment minus the amount that's being paid by other sources, the difference would be the amount that actually hits the tax levy. When you take that dollar amount and you divide it by your tit out equalized value, you get your tax rate associated with debt service. So in the year 2018, our current year, you have your tax rate associated with paying GO debt is $2.90 a thousand. That's going to stay around that until 2020, and it takes a slight bump, and then it continues to decline over time. Looking at page seven, the next page, this shows you a breakdown of the financings in terms of the total sizing for the GO notes, as well as for the revenue bonds. So it gives you a breakdown of a 2.305 million for the GO notes, and then 1.805 million for the revenue bonds. Taking it a step further, if you look at page eight, page eight really has the same information that the base case page had on page six, but now we're adding in the new estimated debt service payments associated with these notes. So, like I said, these are estimates, we like to estimate conservatively, and we hope that we can, you know, tighten this up on the day of sale and do better than what's shown here. But it gives you a snapshot of where we project the principal and interest payments to be for the new debt, which would be shown in the blue column, kind of in the middle of the page.
Can I just ask a question because I don't know the answer?
Sure.
Why is it that we've got that bump in the fourth year? What is that about?
It's just the way your existing debt is structured. I'd have to look at what specific debt issuance is associated with that bump, but it's just your existing principal and interest payments, you've got just a slight bump in that year.
So it's something we have here?
Right, yeah, it's your existing debt, it's not related to the new debt.
That's what I was wondering, thank you.
The last page then just shows you a snapshot in terms of a one-year trend in municipal bond rates. So this would be, you know, very comparable on a double-A scale, very comparable to what the city's existing rating is, but you can see, you know, interest rates really have started creeping up a little bit since the first of the year, but have, you know, come back down slightly within the last week. But, you know, in general, I don't think it's any surprise that interest rates have started to creep up a little bit, but they're still very favorable, we're still seeing very favorable sales, especially for good-rated municipalities like yourself.
Would you characterize the bond market as being volatile right now or not?
Not especially, no. I'd say there's a fair amount of volume in the market right now. Interest rates have been coming up a little bit, but things have been fairly steady in the bond market right now, I would say, in terms of what we're seeing with sales.
What percentage did you say we were at as far as our ability to borrow?
On a general obligation basis, approximately 70% of your limit.
Is that high?
It's starting to get to that point, still within a safe margin, and you have to consider that every year, you're paying off principal, so every year, you know, you're starting to either remain flat or right at that level, but it's starting to get up there. It's not at a level where we would want to hit the panic button, but-
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious how that's grown over the, say, the past five years, because I know we've gone for a lot of bonds over the past few years. Does that, is that trend going to continue?
Well, it went way up when we had that slump in the assessed value. One of the issues, he says, is that, you know, this debt is flat, and so, but we add that every year. But our assessed value goes up every year, so it's a kind of a horse piece as to which one is going to win one year or not. So if your assessed value goes up substantially, then your percentage rate goes down, and if it doesn't, then you continue to add the debt, you'll notice that it'll start to go up. So if you'd looked at our historical debt from 2000 to about 2013, we were about at 1.2, 1.3 million per year. We've been about 2.2 million per year the last four or five years. A lot of that was that street maintenance program. So that's kind of what the combination is.
Unfortunately, streets don't repair themselves.
Yeah, that's why growth is, I guess, very important for us right now. So, I mean, this question I have here, it goes also into the next piece. The bonds that we're looking at for the sewer system, that doesn't go against the cities, that goes against the utilities?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
You'll note tonight that we're doing some revenue bonds, and they won't list as impacting the tax levy, but they, you have to understand that they will impact the tax rate, or the, not the tax rate, the water rate, the sewer rate. In this case, it's mainly the electric rate. There's about 400, 500,000 in water, and then about the rest of it's electric.
Yeah, about 650 is electric and the rest is water.
Okay, so those, I don't anticipate there'll be a significant impact on electric, but water, it's going to be an impact.
Will we have enough borrowing capacity left to be able to finish or do Sandy Beach?
That's a good question.
You're going to have Ellers looking into all that? Good.
They've been working with us from the beginning. You'll note that their reports weren't part of the report that we did. That's why there were some suggestions on alternate ways to fund the, more to a revenue system than a levy system.
And I don't imagine that the composting can be considered a utility?
No, that will, that will hit the tax rate.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second? No, we don't have a motion and a second. Okay.
I move we adopt Resolution 1817, providing for the sale of $2,305,000 general obligation promissory note.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We just had the presentation. Anyone in the council have any other questions, clarifications? Anything you can think? Seeing none, I'll call the question.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Good, and I think you're going to continue talking to us. Okay, let's go on. Let me find it here, though. Resolution 1818, providing for the sale with the sewer system and light and water utility revenue bonds. Would you read that one, please?
Resolution 18-18, resolution providing for the sale of $1,805,000 sewerage system and light and water utility mortgage revenue bonds, series 2018B.
And do we have a second pre-sale report? Do we want to do it the same way we just did, and then wait for the motion to be made? Or would it be more correct to do it with a motion and then the pre-sale report? Does it matter?
Not.
No, okay, then we'll let you continue.
Okay, thank you. In terms of the purpose, I'll be brief on this one. The primary purpose is to refinance the 2017 bank note issued for water meters, as well as to finance a number of different projects within the utilities, primarily on the water and electric side. In terms of term on this, the revenue bonds would be issued for a 20-year term, principal would be due starting on May 1 of 2019 through 2038, and principal will be payable every six months, beginning November 1, 2018. There will also be a call feature on this, starting with the 2029 maturity, so again, allowing you to refinance the debt if it's favorable, or possibly pay it either in part or in full at that time. The rating, like I said, we'll be doing this rating the same time we do the rating call for the GO notes. The utilities have a single A rating by Standard and Poor's, which is fairly common for utilities in terms of your rating relative to where the rating is on the general obligation side. From a schedule standpoint, follows the same schedule as the GO notes. We talked through the sizing and really the rationale, again, for doing these as separate revenue bonds, as was previously discussed, is really to preserve the general obligation capacity for those projects that do not have a source of revenue like you have with the utilities to be able to help pay the debt service. So the revenues of the utilities will pay for the annual debt service payments. There is sufficient debt service coverage in the utilities to be able to support the debt, as it's shown in the attached schedules. So if you jump ahead to page seven, page seven gives you a snapshot of the revenues of the system, the existing debt, outstanding revenue bonds associated with the utilities, the anticipated principal and interest payments in yellow for the new debt service payments, and again, those will be finalized on day of sale. The total debt service payments, and then what's called your debt service coverage ratio. So what that really is, is we have the total debt service payments divided by the net revenues of the system, actually reversed, the net revenues divided by the total annual principal and interest payments for revenue bond debt. So you're required to maintain at least a coverage ratio of 1.25 times. So it's really, it's a measure to potential investors as they look at these bonds, it's a measure of financial health within the utilities. So really, you take your total revenues coming in minus your total cash expenses, so it doesn't include depreciation, doesn't include the pilot payment that the water and electric utilities would make. So total cash in minus your cash out leaves you your net revenues before you make your debt service payment. Those net revenues have to be at least 125% of your total outstanding annual principal and interest payments, plus be able to support the principal and interest payment that we have coming on. And we can see that we're certainly well above that in terms of coverage. So that's a positive indicator in terms of sale of the bonds, and from a rating perspective as well. And then finally, if I could just-
Can I make a-
Yep, absolutely.
You're going to note that he talked about the system that includes the revenues of water-
Correct.
-electric and wastewater. So if you broke it down into the three, it might not break out that way. That's why we finance it, that's why it says light, water, and sewer. But we try to make sure that each utility covers their own costs, and so when we go in for a rate adjustment, that's what we look at.
Right, and ideally, that's what you'd like to see, is that each utility is standing on its own two feet, but from a financial power standpoint, we're looking to leverage the revenues and the expenses of all three utilities combined to get you really the strongest possible coverage that you might be able to see. From a bond interest rate standpoint, as with the general obligation side, interest rates are starting to creep up on the revenue side as well, still fairly favorable, but not like it was, you know, a few years ago when we were seeing ridiculously low interest rates, but still very favorable.
Can you explain why there's the difference in rates between the promissory note and the bond?
Sure. Promissory notes, because they're backed by the full faith and credit of the taxpayers of the city, you essentially have an irrepealable property tax that goes behind those bonds. Because of that, from an investor standpoint, they're considered to be more secure than revenue bonds, because revenue bonds are backed by the revenues of the system, and while you have a coverage pledge, and you have a debt service reserve that goes along with it, they're generally considered to be slightly more risky than general obligation debt, which is why you see slightly different interest rates associated with those bonds.
Oh, one observation, it seems like the bond market's a little bit less volatile than the promissory note. A little less up and down.
A little. It's a one-year trend. If we were to just back out and show probably a three or five year, it would look a little bit more stable, but we've been showing more of the one-year trend just to show that interest rates are starting to creep up a little bit.
Okay, do we have a motion for Resolution 1818?
I move adoption of Resolution 1818, providing for the sale of $1,805,000 sewerage system and light and water utility revenue bonds.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion at this point? Looks like you did a good job.
Thank you.
No questions here. Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, so Betsy, you done good. Moving us on. Okay, so back here, and we go back here, and let's see. Takes us to item 8K, and ordinance 1187, would you read that for us, please?
This is the second reading, so the title is ordinance 1187, amending comprehensive plan, future land use map, number six. Plan Future Land Use Map Number 6.
Now, did this item need to be speeded up? No. So, this is our second reading. At the next meeting, we will have a third reading, and there will be no action tonight. Okay. Seeing none, let's go on to item 8J. Nope, is that a J? No, that's a KL. Ordinance 1188. Would you read the title for that?
Ordinance 1188, Amending Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Number 6.
Is this also okay to be on a... Or do we need a fast track on this?
I don't know that we need a fast track, but we've already rezoned it. So, waving it and moving it up, it would not be out of order. But it became way too...
In other words, we...
Pardon? Just leave it go?
That's what I would do, yeah.
Okay. Then we will let it go to the next reading. Okay. Item M, would you read that for us?
Ordinance 1189, Amending Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Number 6.
Do we have... This is also second reading. Do we have any need for moving faster?
This is the last one.
Okay, so we're okay. Just leave it go. So, we'll have third reading at the next meeting. And would you read that one, please?
Ordinance 1190, Amending Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Number 6.
I move we suspend the rules and go to... Wave the second reading and go to the third.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and go to the third reading on item 1190. Any discussion? Do we know why?
That's because the next item on the agenda is the rezoning of those parcels.
Okay, and I'll call the roll.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
So, we're now at the third reading for Ordinance 1190. And I could entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 1190, if I have one.
I move we adopt Ordinance 1190.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion at this point? Seeing none, call the roll.
For formality, I'm just going to read the title for the third reading.
Yeah, that's right, third reading.
Ordinance 1190, Amending Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Number 6. Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, and that takes us to item O. You get to read it again. 1191?
Ordinance 1191, amending sections 10-3-2-A, Official Zoning Map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcel 24607141814025.
Okay, now, does this need to move faster, or can it go at the regular rate?
We could actually wait until the first meeting in June.
Okay.
So, then we didn't need to speed up the other one. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Say what?
We didn't need to speed up 1190. I thought we were doing 1191 tonight.
Okay. But it's okay to go to the third reading next time?
Yes. We have to do it at the next meeting, but that is the third reading. You will have the final plat at that meeting, too. So, this ordinance has to come before the... So, you'll get a little bit of a screw-up in the way we normally do it, because you'll see an ordinance before a motion.
Well, would there be any advantage to doing third reading tonight on this? Does that help?
It would clean up how the order went at the next meeting.
Well, maybe we should do that, clean it up. I don't think we're going to change anything next meeting. So, I'll entertain a motion if we want to move this to the third reading.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and move Ordinance 1191 to the third reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second to make this the third reading. I just want to mention we haven't had any feedback in a negative way at all on this item, so there's no real reason to hold it up. So, I would call the roll.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, would you read the third reading, please?
Ordinance 1191, amending sections 10-3-2-A, Official Zoning Map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcel 24607141814025.
So, do we now have a motion to adopt Ordinance 1191, third reading?
So, move.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion at this point? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, so now, you can bring back at the next meeting the next step.
Yes, we could just go right straight to the motions that'll approve the preliminary plat, or not the preliminary, the final plat and the construction plans.
Okay. Recommendations for future agendas? Does anybody have something they want to put on the next agenda? Seeing nothing at this time, people can call Steve with that information, and I will adjourn the meeting.